Good morning. It's nine o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Special meeting of the Commissioners' Court here the 22nd day of April at nine o'clock. We will rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Dear heavenly Father Lord, I just come to you, Lord, thanking you for all you do for us. Lord, I just ask you right now to be with us as we go into this meeting. Just give us the wisdom that we need to do what's right for Titus County and Mount Pleasant area. Lord, I just ask you right now to be with those that have lost loved ones this week. Lord, I know there's several that have gone on to be with you. And I just ask that you just be with the families and watch over and take care of them. Lord, be with our first responders and our service men and women. Take care of them, bring them back home safely to us. Just go with us now and forgive and holy faith in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the God that governs, who governs, and to the people whom he governs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one, public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Nobody wants to speak today? Number two, considering possibly approved the minutes from the April 5th, 2024 regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell. Got a second by Commissioner Parchman to approve those minutes of the April 5th, 2024 regular meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number three, presentation by Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service recognizing National Volunteer Week, featuring local master gardeners, and Ms. Kelly and Ms. Ross here, so.
We're both here, yes. First, we'd like to give certificates for those who participated in the conference. Texas A&amp;M AgriLife sponsors a continuing education conference in December, and we fortunately got to host it, which I think is, I don't know, from listening to y'all, y'all said it's cost-effective and convenient, so we're hoping to get to do that again in December. But this is an opportunity for y'all to get, the Commissioners, to get CEUs, CEUs for your local regulations and the trends and just best practices that helps our county. And we greatly, greatly appreciate all y'all's support, but I'd like to present, if there's any way we could get a picture. All gathered and stuff here. That's one. Just be sure I get it right. So we're hoping we get to do this again.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the judge. He actually gave a warm welcome to everybody. And this conference is for, is for all judges being Commissioners, so it gives them an opportunity to come in and just get continuing education with how many hours y'all are required to do it. Yeah, and get a good picture.
Pretty hard to get all up, so is anyone spot?
We have to prove that we did it. Thank you.
Well, good morning, and thank you guys for.
If you need to pull it down, you can pull it. I don't want you to be on your tiptoes.
There we go.
Well, good morning, and thank you guys for giving us a few minutes to visit with you this morning. It is National Volunteer Week, and so we wanted to take a few minutes here at Commissioners' Court to recognize some of our hard-working volunteers that we have within the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service. And although we have several volunteers, whether they're 4-H volunteers, master wellness volunteers, master gardeners, we have with us today our master gardener group. They are a very active group and within the community, and we really appreciate all that they do. To become a certified Texas master gardener, you have to complete 50 hours of classroom training on different horticulture topics, and then you have to volunteer back 50 hours to become a certified master gardener, teaching the community about horticulture and helping extend that knowledge to the public. And so then, once they're a certified master gardener, they have to maintain those hours. And we have a very active group, a very large group, and so we're very thankful because they make Luanne and I's job a lot easier in extending that education to the public within Titus County and surrounding counties as well. And so for National Volunteer Week, we just wanted to take a few minutes and recognize them. And so at this time, I'd like to ask longtime master gardener Ms. Sharon Cowan to come up, and she's going to talk a little bit about what the group does within the community.
The first, I thank you for the opportunity to be here and share what we do. The first thing I want to thank you for is working on our parking lot. It's greatly, greatly appreciated.
We hear that every once in a while now.
The gardens continue to be well-maintained. We draw visitors probably more than we even know. We've had people traveling, just need a place to relax for a little bit. We've had people traveling with young children who just need to get out of the car for a little bit, and they have come on our grounds, toured our gardens. Some have even had a picnic down at the, at the nature trail. As a volunteer group, we have volunteered 7,302 volunteer hours in 2023. During the past year, we've had three different groups asked to come and tour our gardens. Two were master groups from Arkansas, one Nevada County, one from Miller County, and then the Red River National Naturalists have also visited. We, as master gardeners, know how fortunate we are to have the facilities that we have and the cooperation that we have. The Arkansas group was very complimentary, and I would say probably quite a bit jealous of what we have. They talked about the difficulties that they have finding a place to meet, finding a place to do their gardening craft, so we know that we're very, very fortunate. We're also fortunate to have our county agents, Kelly and Luanne. They share our enthusiasm, and they work with us. Jennifer's not here, but the secretary, she is, I don't know what we would do without Jennifer. She does more things than I can tell you, and helps us in more ways than we can count. We had another successful sale this year. We had over 10,000 plants in the database. For the most part, we grow what we sell. We do buy trees and bushes, and then, of course, when you go shopping, you know, you find a few things you want that weren't on your list, so we do that, too. We had the tree giveaway in cooperation with Forestry Service. What has been a summer horticultural series is now being expanded into a monthly lunch and learn for people in the community as well as master gardeners, and we continue to fund a scholarship to NTCC. Halle Green is our annual field trip for 4th graders. It was held in October. Four school districts participated. We had Chapel Hill, Hearts Bluff, Mount Pleasant, and Rivercrest. Over the two-day event, we had 566 4th graders, 32 teachers, plus a few other adults. Just a brief overview of what we do. We plan our activities around the state-required standards for 4th graders. The activities included butterfly gardens where the kids were actually able to see real examples of the life cycle of a butterfly, the nature trail where many plants, trees were pointed out, and the students were taught safe practices of when they're in the woods. What was extremely interesting to me was the kids filled out a questionnaire at the end, and many of them said, "This is the first time I've ever been in the woods." And so we forget that not everybody has the opportunity to just go out and do. The power of the sun was demonstrated by students making bracelets with UV beads or UV-sensitive beads. They made the bracelets, went outside, saw how the sun changed the beads. This emphasized the need for sunscreen and other safe practices when you're going to be outside. Another thing that was done, we had common household products that looked like something that might be good to drink, and this pointed out the importance of labeling, safe practices at home, and just general awareness of what things are. We had a ham radio demonstration, and actually, some of the kids got to talk to somebody far away. This showed the kids the value that ham radio systems have in cases of emergency, and also just communication in various jobs, and perhaps just for fun. A local dog trainer came, taught basic commands of how you teach a pet, basic commands, and then good practices for caring for your pets. The 4-H brought animals, some of the animals that the kids were able to pet, but this was an opportunity for them to see the wide range of available jobs in the field of agriculture. Discounting a few members who were sick, out of town, or not physically able to participate, 86% of our members added in some way to the success of that event, and we couldn't do it without everybody. So again, I thank you for your support of the organization. It's greatly appreciated, and you enable us to do what we want to do. Thank you so much.
Appreciate all you do. We always had a meeting out there the other day, and they had some lighted plants and stuff. Y'all growing something inside? Is that the master gardeners, or is that something totally different?
The greenhouse, that's us.
That's inside, and I guess you're just the starting phases of it?
We grow in the greenhouse. We put up a hoop house behind the greenhouse, which just means it isn't heated or cooled or watered or whatever. Then we, we just pull every little area that we have, and the last month or two before the sale, we invade their space and have whatever.
We had a lot of questions about it, and that's why I was asking. I said, "I don't know what they're growing there," so, but that was all part of y'all's sale deal? Well, we appreciate all y'all's work out there, and it always looks nice when you drive by out there, keeping the gardens all pretty, and we're glad that the parking lot's working out a whole lot better. And I think we got the leaks fixed as well, so we're moving in the right direction.
Like Sharon said, thank you again. We're extremely fortunate to have the space that we do to allow them to educate people in the community of all ages, whether they're youth, adults, and so we greatly appreciate you guys. And we do have a plant that was propagated by the master gardeners to give to you today, so thank you for your time, and we appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all so much.
We also wanted to invite y'all to our volunteer luncheon Wednesday.
Thank you, ma'am.
Take Miss Ross.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Kelly. Number four on the agenda, considering possibly approved the plat of proposed the Timberline subdivision located on County Road 4360 and County Road 4365 submitted by developer Bruce Harwell, and that's in Jimmy's precinct. I don't see Mr. Bain here. I do have his report here, but.
Yeah. I talked to him for Thursday, I guess it was, and he said that everything that he could see looked good on it. I've been by over there and looked at it. I don't see a problem with it. I make a motion that we approve it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve this in Precinct 4.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number five, considering possibly approved the transfer and closeout of the remaining right-of-way of the Fund 075 on the general fund to be used in any other capital project in it, or Melissa, one of y'all want to speak on that?
After the closeout of all of that project, there's approximately $545,000 remaining in that fund, and we're just requesting that that be moved so it can be used for other capital outlay.
Melissa, is that part of that shared equipment, part of that is not in there?
No.
Okay. I'd have a motion on that.
I'll make it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number six, considering possibly approved the LATCF 2520-2023 annual report. These funds were received from the local assistance of the tribal consistently fund and has to be obligated for capital expenditures. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. What that is, is some funds that we get each year from the tribal deal, but we have to put that over, have to obligate it where it's going, or we lose those funds.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve those, put that into the capital project.
Take it.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number seven, considering possibly approved Auctioneer Express to auction use equipment for the county. We've used them before, and they do a real good job for us here in Titus County.
I make a motion to approve them.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve Auctioneer Express.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? All those opposed? Number eight, considering possibly approved extending the HVAC maintenance program contract with Roberts Air Conditioning, which ends in May 7th, 2024, with an option for renewal of two years, additional years. They have been on board with us for a year now, and it does have that in the contract. I think they're doing an outstanding job on keeping everything up. They come right away when we need them, and all the maintenance has been doing great, so.
I make a motion to approve their extension.
I got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to extend that for an additional two years with Roberts Air Conditioning.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number nine, considering possibly approved inter-local corporation contract failure to appear program between Department of Public Safety of the State of Texas and the County Court of Texas, Titus County. This here is just an inter-local corporation contract that we do make with them for FTAs and things of that nature, mainly coming out of our, not the Commissioners' Court, but the criminal court, and also with the JPs with Ms. Irma, and also with Mr. Agan.
I make a motion we approve it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve that inter-local corporation contract.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor? All those opposed? Number 10, considering possibly accept the award of rural law enforcement salary assistant program grant SB 22 for the county attorney in the amount of $175,000, and then to the sheriff's office for $350,000 as a matter of record. Those funds have already been received, and we're just putting that on the record that we got those funds in now.
I make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, and a second by Commissioner Parchman to accept those. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 11, considering possibly accept the award of rural law enforcement salary assistant program grant SB 22 for the district attorney in the amount of $175,000 as a matter of record. Once again, this is a separate deal with the district attorney's office that came in.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor? All those opposed? Number 12, considering possibly approved SB 22 expenditures for Titus County and Camp County District Attorney's Office. David, are you here to speak on that?
Good morning. We, there was some confusion in how this is distributed, and so what we did, what I did was talk to Representative Heffner, expressed that some of the communication from the comptroller's office as it goes to the, as it goes to auditors, as it goes to treasurers, as it goes to DAs, has, you know, created some confusion. He set up a conference call through the comptroller's office for me on Friday afternoon, and that included the basic two people running the grant, Russell Gallahan and Heather Hampton. In addition, comptroller's legal counsel, in addition to that, who appeared to be her boss, and then some other people at the comptroller's office. Also, our treasurer attended, and representative from auditor's office attended in that, and so we were able to, you know, ask questions and get clarification, which now shared with other DAs. It was very, you know, everybody's grateful that Representative Heffner set that up and let us do that. Answers we got, we're going to have to change some things that we talked about back in January, and so I wanted to just bring that to y'all's attention. So first of all, the salary increase, okay, so we can increase the salary of an assistant prosecutor, we can increase the salary of a victim's assistant coordinator, and we can increase the salary of an investigator or investigators. We can also create any new positions, okay, and those aren't limited. That was clarified. So as far as the assistant DA salary, I'm asking you to, I mean, you already awarded, you already approved the amount, and I'm just asking that that be paid now, between now and the end of the fiscal year, next fiscal year. We can deal with, deal with that separately with the new grant funds, you know, and it doesn't have to stay the same. That's, that's the takeaway, you know, in whatever, whatever benefits can be adjusted. The other thing is, so instead of creating a new victim's assistance coordinator, Erica Aguilar is being named as my victim's assistance coordinator, and from the Senate Bill 22 funds, I've directed the treasurer's office and the auditor's office to, from those funds, increase her salary between now and the end of the fiscal year by $12,000, and whatever, again, whatever benefits come from those funds, come from that portion of the funds can be paid from the Senate Bill 22 funds. So still nothing from, from the county on that. Additionally, to even out salaries in my office, my discretionary forfeiture funds, I'm going to use those to give Yolanda Hodge a $12,000 raise, and again, like we've done with other forfeiture monies that I've reimbursed the county with as far as salaries and raises, any, any benefits from those will go from the forfeiture fund. So that, that'll be part of what gets reimbursed to the county.
How much is left in that fund?
Over $100,000.
And is it, does it grow by 12, 20,000 a year? What does it normally grow by?
It just, it just depends. It depends on the money that comes in. The money gets hit on the interstate or what gets picked up in the county.
So that money could be depleted at some point?
At some point, it will be depleted unless, unless, you know, law enforcement starts working the interstate again more.
And then where do those funds come from?
Well, that's, you know, that's the question, you know, but.
That's pretty big question. If we're, if we're going to give them, give them that raise, and the money runs out, and then, then we're sitting here as a commissioner, we've got to figure out where that money come from.
Yeah. Well, and it's fine for you to ask the question, but the reality is, those funds are my discretion on how to spend.
Absolutely, they are, but if they're not there, you can't spend them. So who's going to make up for those funds is what I'm asking.
Well, there's either forfeiture funds, or there's not forfeiture funds. When we have them, we can spend them, and when they're, when they're not there, they can't be spent.
Okay, but if we give them in a salary, then are they going to sign up where that they realize if that goes away, that their salary goes away?
Yeah. Well, they, I mean, you know, that's, that's what all this is about. The same thing whenever we advertise for any, for any positions with the Senate Bill 22 money. That's why we put that caveat in there. I mean, this is grant, it's like, you know, any, any grant-funded thing, anything else that's, that's extra, you know, it can go away, and that's just the way it is.
Why would you, and it's your money. Why would you not take it out of the SB 22 money instead of out of that forfeiture money, because you know it's there?
Because I cannot. There are rules against that. So for example, you can't just, I can't give, I can only give a raise to assistant prosecutors, investigators, or victim's assistance coordinators. And the comptroller said, "Yeah, you know, you have two counties. You could have two victim's assistance coordinators, but that's a little, that's a little dicey. You're going to have to justify the amount of victim's assistant coordinating that goes with that." And they advised me, and I think that's a well-heeded advice. Because, because if we pay for, if we increase Yolanda's salary with Senate Bill 22 money, that's going to be a problem next year, and it's going to be less Senate Bill 22 money we get. Same thing for the investigator. Because, because, because it was budgeted, and then I was instructed not to hire anybody until we got Senate Bill 22 money, since it's in the budget, they say it looks like, they say it's going to look like we're supplanting county funds, we're supplanting county obligations to my office with Senate Bill 22 money, and advised me against.
That doesn't have anything to do with the SB 22 on the investigator. That had to do with us not having a contract with Judge Mason and them from Camp County and signed, and he said he wasn't going to pay for the investigator, so, without going back to him. So that's where that come from, so.
Okay, and that's fine.
Let's clear that up.
That's fine, but I mean, the reality is, you know, the reality is, I cannot fill the investigator's spot with Senate Bill 22 money.
But it's in the budget already. Is that not right?
It's in the budget already.
That money's already there?
Yeah.
$53,000 has already been budgeted for an investigator for the DA's office.
Right. But as far as the county recouping that, we can't do it with Senate Bill 22 money. So we can create, I mean, just, just to give y'all a heads up, you know, I can create other positions with the Senate Bill 22 money, and we'll do that, and we'll advertise for those, either as a prosecutor, which I've already hosted, and then also just basically an intake coordinator is probably what I'll call it, but, you know, this new position, again, in this Indian County money that would be doing any of that, and we'd probably need to come back before y'all to get that approval, once, once there was a position and a salary amount and all that.
Have you talked to Mr. Bailey about what he wants hired, and since you believe in the position?
Well, we're just talking about this fiscal year, and he doesn't have anything to do with this fiscal year. If he wants to talk to me about next year, he's welcome to reach out to me. Again, this starts over October 1st. There'll be another grant for all the offices October 1st, and so money we don't spend between now and end of this fiscal year goes back to the state. So I'm asking the court to either approve those or give the auditor authority to do whatever she needs to do to budget amendments or line items, to, and line moving, to make, to make all that be where it's supposed to be.
I think the best thing to do with it would be is to table it until Nanette and Melissa feel more comfortable with it, since Melissa hadn't even heard the conversation other than secondhand from Nanette. Nanette's been up since 2:00 in the morning trying to work on these figures. If it's, if it's okay to do it, it's going to be okay next month or whatever, so my opinion would be to table it until they get some more information on it.
Well, I mean, that's fine, but you know, the comptroller told us that we could have started this October 1st. We didn't do it. I told you in January, they're telling us, "Go ahead and start spending the money. Go ahead and give these raises to the, to everybody," and, and.
Once again.
And you talked to council on doing it. I'm just asking y'all, go ahead, let's put this to bed. The approval, I mean, the, the comptroller has already said, "This is how you, this is how it needs to be done. This is how it's okay to do it." I'm just asking the council to go ahead, pass a blessing on this, and let's, let's be done and go.
You ladies would have more information, or y'all feel comfortable?
I've requested information from the state comptroller's office in writing to verify all of this. I have not seen the Zoom meeting. Like you said, I've only heard all this information secondhand. I would like to get the information from the comptroller's office to verify that what we are doing is accurate.
I totally, I totally agree, and that's why I want to table it till the end. Like I said, and if it's legal, and it's going to be okay to do it that way, doesn't matter if we do it today, or we do it in two weeks or a month to do that, so that we're cleared up, so.
I don't know what more we need. We had an email from Heather Hampton today that says, or last night, I don't remember when it came, that says, "This is perfectly accepted." So I don't know, I don't know what more.
So what's the problem with waiting two weeks for her to have more information?
What, what more information do we need?
I want an opinion from the AG's office.
I'm sorry?
I want an opinion from the AG's office. You can roll your eyes. It's taxpayer dollars.
It's not taxpayer dollars.
It's coming from the state. Yes, it is.
And they've told us exactly how we can spend it.
No, they have not.
Yes, they have. Yes, they have. We're on a conference call with the. We're on a conference call with the people who matter and their counsel, and they said...
One of our ladies was not on the conference call, and she matters quite a bit. She's our auditor.
She was invited to the conference call, she had opportunities to be there. Instead, a representative was there, and that's perfectly fine. And if she was traveling, sometimes if we don't have a good signal, we pull over the side of the road if that's important.
Once again, unless you get a motion from up here, we're gonna have to table it. So I don't know. I make the motion to table it.
I'll second that motion.
I got a motion made by me to table it, and a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Who's opposed? You're opposed? Dana's opposed.
Judge, one little side note. I think this issue with his assistant at 12,000, my understanding, there's an email that comes out, Homeless Daily, these prosecutors talking about it. They've addressed that with the legislature. I think they're gonna probably amend the law and fix that.
Be great.
That might solve that.
So whole problem.
So, yeah, to where we can just use it however we want. I mean, it's kinda odd, they said, you know, investigator, victim assistance coordinator, and any new positions, and that could be anything. It is not real logical. So they'll probably fix that, but no guarantees. But that might make things better for a lot.
And like I said, Melissa was in, she was at school and College Station on her way back during the Zoom. You haven't been to A&M much, there's a lot of dead zones through there. We appreciate you even trying to get on it and get more information. We handle it with all the information and makes it easy. If it's okay today, it'll be okay in two weeks, and they can still fill it the same direction, so.
Number 13. Considering posting a 45 mile an hour speed limit sign on County Road 1140, adding stop signs at the intersection of Farmer Market Road 1734 and County Road 1240, and on County Road 1140 with parking signs. Is that yours?
Yeah, that's my road. And the reason why we're putting them there is because people, they fly down that road. Even when we're working on it, they'll pass by us doing 65 miles an hour on it. And that, adding the stop signs, they're already there at the stop signs, is where we'll put the speed limit signs, the stop lines, the stop signs are already there. But it's just a precaution, it's a county road, and people fly on it, and I think there ought to be a speed limit sign on it. And this is the proper way to get it, is take it before court to make it where it's legal, to enforce that speed limit sign. So I'd make a motion to put them on this road.
Okay. Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, and a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 14. Considering possibly approve allowing the inter-church prayer group the use of the North Courthouse steps together on Thursday, May the 2nd, 2024, at 12 noon, in observance of the National Day of Prayer. They've called me, they also asked that we get the music turned off outside for that day. This is a national day of prayer, and I think this is always good for anybody to step up and pray.
Make a motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 15. Considering possibly approve adding of the Titus County fraud, waste, and abuse policy to the employee handbook.
Do we have a copy of this policy?
It was in the...
Is it?
It was in the... It was in the... We have to have a fraud policy in order to pass the grants that we've been arguing with, the Senate's grant, we'll get a grant, and put it in front. It's probably gonna save more, especially with the time of the year that's coming, because we have to kind of...
Get her a new bag.
I make a motion to approve the...
Fraud?
Fraud, waste, and abuse policy.
We got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the Titus County fraud, waste, and abuse policies in the employee handbook.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 17. Considering possibly approve the purchase of a new 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 HD, two-wheel-drive crew cab, 172-inch work truck.
You skipped 16.
Okay, back to 16, sorry. Number 16. Considering possibly approve adding of the Titus County fraud position disclaimer for the county procedure for the handbook. Considering possibly approve the adding of the Titus County...
I don't have a copy of it.
...grant form.
This is my discretion, so the treasurer's office is over payroll. I don't have a copy of it. We're gonna have it in place before we do anything. Okay, but you have to... I mean, I gave the... I mean, I gave the... I submitted it to the judge's office to be put in their packet.
I got it, man. Give it to me.
We have a trouble with fraud here already.
Ms. Chisholm, what we're having a problem with is, we've got two new grants out, and if we don't have a fraud policy in your handbook to go along with, then they're gonna kick the grant back till you get the fraud policy, so. Yes and no. No fraud yet, but we're trying to get a policy for it.
Did you get them a copy already, Ms. London?
Um, no. I guess I missed that, I'm sorry. This also was presented to the county attorney's office and was reviewed by their office, and they said the statement was...
Judge, Nanette, just take a quick note, she's done an excellent job on all this. She might as well be on staff in my office, which works. So I really appreciate it.
Like I said, it has to do with all of the grant that we signed up for those two grants. So what it does is, basically what this contract grant does, when they sign this, it just lets them know that this is award made of the grant, and that's how they got their job. If the job goes away, then the job will not be anymore, so that we're not on the hook for, if we've had five new employees, the grant goes away, the county doesn't have to pick up all those funds, those jobs do go away.
May I make one more statement?
Yes, ma'am.
To this form. I recently prepared an internal control questionnaire from the attorney general's office related to grant awards that are administered to the county. Within the structure of that, they asked the question of what we had in place for grant awards that were paid to employees, and what disclaimers that we had in place pertaining to what they signed, knowing that the money could be adjusted if the grant were to go away. We've never received these types of funds at this county in the time that I've been here, therefore there was no form in place at that time. Because we have recently, in the last two payrolls, distributed funds to county employees reflective of grant money, I thought it would be in the best interest of the county to expedite the form, to get it in place, and concurred with the county attorney's office, they agreed and had spoken with the treasurer, and she agreed. So any issue with this not going through, it was expedited, is my point. It didn't have time to go probably through the proper channel. It was expedited because we wanted to give the employees that received those grants in this payroll cycle, they're willing to sign these forms. They do have a right, as a citizen, as an employee, to refuse the money, because they don't want them, I mean, they would not, of course. But this also gives them the opportunity to know, we're giving you this, but it could be taken away. So that's the reason that my office accepted the responsibility when asked, that's the reason that we expedited it. And I'm sorry that the commissioners did not get prior notice of this, because it was just a quick expedited document.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this Titus County grant-funded position disclaimer.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the grant, the Titus County grant-funded position disclaimer to the county procedure in the employee handbook.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Now to number 17. Considering possibly approve the purchase of a new 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 HD, two-wheel-drive cab with a work truck quote from Tips Purchasing Incorporated of number 230802, for $49,836.65 for Precinct 1.
This will be a truck that I won't be making any pass truck out of, and I will be, it'll be replacing two of the trucks that I'm putting in auction for war out, so I make a motion to approve it.
Motion made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Got a second made by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 18. Considering possibly terming the bucket truck from shared equipment to be surplus or salvaged and approved for sale. I know this is all y'all's, and this, I don't know where it's located any time, so...
It's at the maintenance barn. Jeff asked me the other day after we approved that, the other stuff that we approved, about it, said nobody has used it and all, now and while the bucket, we've got this other bucket truck, and it's working extremely well, and this one's just sitting there, so it'd be something that we probably need to get rid of. I've got the, in fact, I give Monica one, and they should have a copy of the serial number and all off of it.
And that'll be in, that'll go back to the...
It will go back in with the shared equipment, yeah.
Okay. You make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
I got Jimmy Parker making a motion on that, for the bucket truck to be, shared equipment to be put to surplus and salvage.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 19. Considering possibly approve payment to the Fire Chief Solutions for the second installment, $20,000 for the contract Titus County to be paid by the first day of May 2024.
I make a motion to approve the payment.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the payment.
I've got a question, Judge. Do we, have we received a budget or anything? Wasn't he supposed to give us a budget by the 1st of April?
I don't know about the 1st of April, he'll be getting one together.
I thought that was in the contract. I meant to pick mine up, and I didn't.
He sent a list of everything that he's done so far that I've got.
Yeah, I got, I saw that, but I thought the two were supposed to be a...
You can check with him and see. Call him and see when that budget will be here.
This is a major deal, we've gotta get it going, and we can't just keep putting stuff off. I hope, you know, we can do this and get it done.
We got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yep.
So we're gonna continue this, holding everything up, but we'll move right on along. Number 20. Considering possibly approve the proposal for an independent emergency communication system for Titus County Fire Service by expanding the scope of the contract with the Fire Chief Solutions. What that will do is, he's wanting to get a company to come in and tell us exactly what type of communications we will need, what type of, what type of tower we need to try to work along with the Sheriff's Department with their new tower that they're gonna be purchasing soon, and that's why that's on there. We gotta have communications to get the firemen to the scenes.
Make this motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yep.
Three to two, passes again. Consider the request of funds by the Taco Volunteer Fire Department for the purchase of an automated external defibrillator, an AED, for $2,100 with possible action. Don't see any of the firemen here from there. There you go.
I'm here on behalf of Taco, and we'd like to request the funds of $2,100 for the AED. We currently have one that is out of service because of date and batteries. The batteries in that particular unit are exclusive to that company, so even if we did get one, they cost quite a bit, and the unit itself is still out of date. So we would like to get another one, as we have been recently covering part of our surrounding districts with medical calls, with increasing medical calls. I just feel like that would be very beneficial for everyone around us to have an additional AED on standby.
Do you know how much funds y'all have in the volunteer fire department there?
How much funds? We currently have, I believe, around $14,000 in our, make fun there, for all of our maintenance and everything, for our, I guess, reimbursements for our fire department and all that.
Do you know what turnaround time, on if you do get this approved, how long it'd be to get one?
To get one? I could have it ordered within the next few days, once we get approval for it, and we could use our current funds to pay for that while we're waiting for, I guess, a reimbursement from the county if they approve this. Just that way we can go ahead and get that coming and get that on our trucks.
What do you say, Ms. Nanette?
Because this isn't currently in this year's budget, we would have to take the funds from contingency in order to cover that expense. That is something that the court needs to take into consideration.
But you...
That it isn't in the current budget.
Right.
For the volunteer fire department. All of the funds that we have for them are being distributed based on the commitments that we've made to them. So this would be over and above their normal...
I think what she's telling us is, if y'all did it, then we could put it in the October budget, that you could ask for it there, if you got the funds from your volunteer fire department, and then bring it back to the budgeted hearing to see, instead of us taking it out of contingency.
Okay. So readdress it in October?
You could get funded for it. I think that you probably need to go on and get it, my belief on that, but then you'd have to bring it back up when budgeting come for each fire department.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you.
Do we need to table that?
Yeah, I make a motion to table it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to table that. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 22. Considering possibly approve paying of construction company for an architecture plan for fire station to include all relative schedules for a build. We do have that drawing here. Y'all get that in your bag? That's with Stansel Construction, they drew that all up, for a fire station on the inside, what they'd have to do, plans and all, and the total on that was $29.75. And I do think that if whoever's, if he's not awarded the bid, of course, that $29.75 would stay there, but if he does, I think that that would be taken back out of whatever his costs were, which I don't blame him for not wanting to draw plans up and somebody else use them for free, so...
I make a motion to approve...
Got a motion made. Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the drawings by Stansel Construction.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yep.
Just Jeff, so three to one. All right, we're gonna press into executive session to deliver about some real property in accordance with Texas Government Code Number Section 551.072, with possible action to be taken. So, that's it. 9:51, we'll adjourn. Okay, it's 10:10.
Uh.
All those opposed?
Uh.
Number 22. Considering possibly approve paying of construction company for an architecture plan for fire station to include all relative schedules for a build. We do have that drawing here. Y'all get that in your bag?
Mm-hmm.
That's with Stansel Construction. They drew that all up for a fire station on the inside, what they'd have to do, plans and all. And the total on that was $2975. And I do think that if whoever's, if he's not awarded the bid, of course, the $2975 would stay there. But if he does, I think that that would be taken back out of whatever his costs were, which I don't blame him for not drawing plans up. Somebody else use them for free, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made.
The drawing.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the drawings by Stansel Construction.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 15. Considering possibly approve paying of construction company for an architecture plan for fire station to include all relative schedules for a build. We do have that drawing here. Y'all get that in your bag?
Mm-hmm.
That's with Stansel Construction. They drew that all up for a fire station on the inside, what they'd have to do, plans and all. And the total on that was $2975. And I do think that if whoever's, if he's not awarded the bid, of course, the $2975 would stay there. But if he does, I think that that would be taken back out of whatever his costs were, which I don't blame him for not drawing plans up. Somebody else use them for free, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made.
The drawing.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the drawings by Stansel Construction.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 17. Considering possibly approve the purchase of a new 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 HD, two-wheel-drive cab with a work truck quote from TIPS Purchasing Incorporated of number 230802 for $49,836 and 65 cents for Precinct 1.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made.
The drawing.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve that as a matter of record.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Number 18. Considering possibly determine the budgeted amendments.
Okay, this is Budget Amendment 2024-15. The first item on the budget amendment is the loan to Precinct 3 that was approved. We're doing a budget amendment to put $158,000 of capital outlay and to do the loan proceeds of $158,000. The second item is a redistribution, line item transfer of items in the county attorney's office. He is reallocating his investigator position, his county secretary position, by eliminating his two part-time, his part-time secretary and part-time court bailiff, and moving those funds to those salary lines. And then SB 22, there was a line item that was budgeted for that. Those funds will not be used because SB 22 is going to allow the county to not incur the fringe benefits on the salaries that were given to his new employees in his department. And so we are moving some $5,077 from that line item to accommodate the restructuring. His investigator to $70,000. The secretary's is increasing 31 by $3,174. The victim's assistance coordinator is also budgeted in that line, so there's two positions, so that was moved. The third is our contingency line item. We're moving $50,000 to accommodate repairs and maintenance, primarily the riddle roof repair that has recently been brought to our attention. We are moving the money to take care of that. The last item that we have is to be able to budget for the medical and dental associated with the new position that was appointed for the emergency management coordinator. They are on the county benefits, and we do have to allot and make accommodations for those. We did utilize some of the already pre-budgeted funds for that in the amount of $4,000. We just reallocated that, and the remainder of that came out of the contingency fund. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the budgeted amendments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Number 17. Sign the pay orders and approve the payments.
Make a motion with payer bills.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to pay those payments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 18. Closing comments. Jeff?
It's just wet, and just stay dry, and don't get out in the pasture.
Ms. Applewhite?
No.
Jimmy?
I don't have anything.
All right. Well, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I make a motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell.
Maybe we'll stay here.
All those in favor?
Uh.